Okay, it's 5 o'clock. I would like to call this July 12, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order. We'd ask you to turn off your cellphones or any other devices so not to disrupt the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. I would like to welcome Cheryl Graham from the Howard County Planning Commission. Cheryl, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mike.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from June 14.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved. Director Shuline.
Mr. President, before we get into the agenda, we do have one continuance tonight. Item number eight on your agenda, case P-13Z-22, petition of Daniels LLC requesting a change in zone classification from R-3 to PD-R3. This is located west of Judson at Christian Church at 2006 Judson Road. This is the Arbor Homes Judson Road and Dixon. They've asked for a continuance till next month's meeting. So if anyone in the audience is here for case P-13Z-22, that has been continued till next month. So the first case we're looking at tonight, Mr. President, is case PO-6-P-22, petition of JM Civil Engineering requesting approval of the primary and final plat for lots one and four in the replat, and this is at 515 East Southway Boulevard.
Move for approval?
Second.
Jim Victory representing JM Civil.
Give us the summary.
Summary.
Address.
Oh, sorry. 8740 East 30th Street, Indianapolis, 46219.
Thank you.
Effectively, I'm the prime contractor on the project. Effectively, they're trying to separate the properties between the car wash and the oil change so that they can assign the title to a local franchisee that is going to maintain the oil change.
Board have questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this case? Hearing none, I'll call for approval on a vote for case P-06-P-22. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Director Shuline.
Next case tonight, Mr. President, is case PO-8-P-22, petition of Arbor Homes, Shawn Downey requesting approval of the final plat for Highland Springs, Section 8. This is south of 1116 Spring Hill Drive and west of County Road South 100 East.
Move for approval?
Second.
Is there someone here to present this case?
Good evening. Thank you. Shawn Downey with Arbor Homes, office located at 9225 Harrison Park Court, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46216. As Mr. Shuline indicated before you, is our final plat and construction plans for what will be Section 8. It'll be the last section for us, Arbor Homes, in that Highland Springs development that we look to build in. We have met before, the advisory plan committee a couple weeks ago, had a handful of comments which our consultant, American Structure Point, has revised. I believe we have one comment regarding a path. We need to work with John, further discussion regarding that along County Road 100. But with that, I'd open it up to any questions or comments.
Everything else good on the plat?
Everything else is good. There's nothing I can't. I think we can work through it before we get the board of works approving the plat. So just a matter of how we figured the procedure for getting that taken care of.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote for the final plat on case P-08-P-22. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Director Shuline.
Next case tonight, Mr. President, is case PO-8-A-22, petition of Civil Site Group requesting development plan approval for Elite Home Rehab. This is at 401 Reynolds Drive.
Move for approval?
Second.
Good evening. Eric Leisner with Civil Site Group, office address 718 Adams Street, Carmel, Indiana, 46032. I'm the civil engineer representing Elite Therapy, project to be located at 401 Reynolds Drive within the limits of the city of Kokomo. The proposed redevelopment of the site situated on 1.4 acres on the southeast corner of Reynolds Drive and La Fontaine Street. There is an existing vacant building on the property along with two asphalt parking lots. The existing building above grade is to be demolished with the basement to remain. A new 8,740 square foot, single-story, commercial building is to be built over the existing basement. Portions of the existing asphalt pavement will be removed, creating room for building-based landscaping. The existing covered drop-off lane along the north side of the existing building is also to be removed. The remaining parking lot will then be rehabilitated and restrepped to serve the new building. It should be noted, the parking lot on the southern half of the property is currently leased for use by the hospital and will remain unchanged. With the proposed improvements to the site, we will actually be increasing the green space from the existing conditions. Last week, we resubmitted revisions, revised documents to address the comments we've received to date. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All good on the plat?
Yeah, everything taken care of, yep.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of development plan approval for case P-08-A-22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is approved.
Next case tonight, Mr. President, is case PO-9-A-22, petition of Trip Engineering Consulting requesting development plan approval for ABC Storage. This is at 1624 East Jefferson Street.
Move for approval?
Second.
Hello, my name is Jeff Grayfin. I'm the owner and developer of the proposed ABC Supply at 1624 East Jefferson. My address is 22774 Citation Road, Frankfurt, Illinois. We are proposing removing the existing structures at the 1624 East Jefferson address and installing a new 30,000 square foot building supply facility that's fully sprinkled and open for any questions.
All good on the plat?
Yeah, they moved the building back.
Any questions from the board on this case? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case P-09-A-22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always like to make a little statement when we have a crowd of this size. I know it seems like if you've never been to a public hearing like this before, that we move things, prove things pretty quickly. But I just want everyone to know that there's a lot of meetings outside of this meeting that go on long before this meeting's ever established to make sure that everything is done properly. We have discussions with my office, our staff. We have a TAC meeting which we go through everything. Sometimes we involve the city attorney. We involve engineering. So there are lots of discussions that go on. So I just don't want people to get the impression that we rubber stamp everything up there because that is certainly not the case. So that's my soapbox for the night. So... Next case tonight, Mr. President, is case PO-7-P-22, petition of Trip Engineering and Consulting requesting approval of the primary plat for Abbey Place, Section 2. This is north of Abbey Place, Section 1, and west of north, 100 East West. Zero zero East West, I'm sorry.
Move for approval?
Did you say PO-7, or P-22?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just came because I wasn't sure what this dealt with. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me get to where I get to.
Yeah, hang on a second.
I'll get right to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay. You're all right.
I've never done this.
It's okay. We'll let you talk here in just a second.
Okay, sorry.
Just give us... No, you're fine, man.
I have a motion in a second. Is that correct? Is there someone here to present this case?
I guess I...
Jim Hickey, 5617 Hidden Valley Road, Rusheville, Indiana. We are proposing to do the 41 lot extension to Abbey Place. I've been around for a long time, developed at least five subdivisions here in Kokomo, Walnut Estates, Terrace Meadows, a section of Terrace Meadows. Partners and I did Frederick Farms. All have been very good addition to this city. And so I just hope that you'll take consideration of this subdivision extension. Thank you.
Was this in the plat?
Hmm?
I'm sorry?
It was.
For preliminary approval.
It's just preliminary approval.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience?
Well, I was just wondering what this...
Can we have your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Nancy Willhoy, 224 Luke Court, Abbey Place. And I got this letter and I'm not sure what it's exactly about with the lingo. And I just thought I might be coming for somebody to explain it to me.
Sure. They're wanting to add Section 2 to Abbey Place.
Well, they've been doing that for a long time. I've been there since 2002.
This is 41 new lots in Section 2.
Is that going to be encroaching on me? Is that why I got this?
No, you got it because you're a joint property owner. By state statute, all adjoining property owners get letters when something like this...
So everybody round me on Luke Court.
Any adjoining property owner, we got that same letter. So you're aware of the meeting. If you have any issues or concerns, that's why you get the...
The only concern I wondered is they're gonna do something to my property. You know, it's not that big of a lot on something like that. That's the only reason I was...
They will not encroach on your property.
Okay, that's the only reason why. I wanted to make sure about this because I've never got too many certified letters.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions from the audience?
I live at 216 Luke Court. We bought...
Can I have your name as well?
I'm Crystal, sorry. We bought the house two years ago, a new build. So there was obviously, sorry, previous houses built there. I don't think it's a good idea. The neighborhood itself is not a good neighborhood. There's a handful of people who are good and a handful of people who take care of their houses and the value of their houses. The other houses that were in my group that sold, they did not sell. They had to lower the prices extremely down where, I'm not sure what the right word is, it attracted the wrong buyers. Majority of those houses you pull in, it's just, you could tell right away. They don't take care of their yard, the house, and then therefore the ones who do take care of their house and their property, I feel like it will bring our value down. I don't have the biggest, best house, but we do upgrade. We do what we can. Where I live at behind me, is that where they're building the houses? I didn't look at the plan yet. Are they building behind Luke Court or is it going to be to the right? I didn't get to look yet.
Behind there, in the drive.
Okay.
West of Luke Court.
So west of it. I guess it won't affect me that much, but the reason we bought our house is because all the land behind it, we look to our right, to our left, behind us, there's nobody there. We see a lot of natural life because there's woods. Building those houses, I think that is going to affect the natural life as well. We see deer, coyotes, everything. That's going to affect everything. We don't want to hear the noise. And it floods quite a bit out there. Our house, actually, every time it rains, there's only one drain. Water comes up. There's a lot of hills. It's uneven plain out there. I just don't think it's a good idea. I think we need to stop where we are with Abbey Place subdivision just because of value of the houses and there's already three different builders that have built out there. So there's different types, different properties, and to add a fourth one, I just, the value of the houses are going to be all over the place. It's going to be hard for me to sell my house in the future if we come and build even bigger, better houses, I guess. And there's a lot of cliques. The people who build houses and buy the houses are in cliques out there. So I just don't think it's a good idea.
With all due respect, if someone else owns that land, they have the right to...
I just want to voice my opinion.
No, I understand. But correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that when first section was built, that there was always a plan for Section 2.
Yeah, there was always, yeah, Section, yeah.
Always a plan for Section 2, so...
They bought the rest, someone else brought the rest of that was empty lots. So there was no more empty lots besides maybe one, and I'm not sure if someone else owns that. So we thought, that's it, it's done. So to continue and go out there and take, you know, more and to build more is just, I don't think it's going to be a good value to the area of the location, the noise. We hear Chrysler all night, all morning is loud. And then you have the highway not too far off. We have crime across the street in two different areas. That happened a lot with shootings. It's just to add more houses, it's not a good idea in that area. I think it should be done. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Wyatt Johnson, 555 Market Road, Tipton. And we're working for Trip Engineering to do the surveying part of the plat. She will do the development plan part. And I just wanted to say that the property is zoned properly, therefore, provided that the development plans are approved by the city, the owner has the right to do this project. Part of the process of approval is drainage, and it goes into a regulated drain. If it were in another part of the city where it goes into a city storm sewer, the requirements are a little bit less for drainage. So they'll have to meet the requirements of the county drainage board, and the tile may or may not be sized large enough, which may put more of a restriction on having, or sizing the retention pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the audience?
I have a question here, just real quick. Is the lot size compatible with what is currently there?
Yeah, exactly. What's same is what's all the rest of them. In fact, we bought all the remaining lots in there. And so the last 10 lots that were available, we're finishing those out right now. And so we're almost finished with those. But yeah, 6,520 is what all the rest of them are.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of primary plat for case P-07-P-22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved.
Next case tonight, Mr. President, is case P-12-Z-22, petition of Trip Engineering Consulting requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition and recommended the Kokomo Common Council for change in zone classification from office commercial to M2 multifamily. This is at 2331 West Lincoln Road.
Move for approval?
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there someone here to present this case? Presenting the case, sir, you have a question?
I'm presenting the case.
Please go.
I'm Charlie Sparks with the Greater Kokomo Economic Development Alliance. What's wrong, Gray?
This isn't your case, Charlie.
Oh, I thought it was.
I think you're the, I think you are, you'll be the next one. Sorry.
He's just eager. Just a little. He had me going there for a minute.
If you want to do Tori's job, I'm sure she's fine with that.
I thought it was a retirement job.
That's all right. Tori Trip, Trip Engineering and Consulting, 401 South Second Street, Converse. We're asking for rezoning of a 2.27 acre lot along Lincoln Road, sits next to Lad Dental. They're wanting to put townhomes there, so we're asking for the M2.
Any questions from the board before we have staff report?
How's the addition going to work with part of the parking lot on that lot already?
The parking lot is actually going away. It's part, they had a survey done. Let me pass this out to you. The orange is what we're asking for rezoning on.
Title to your map is where there's an existing curb, yes, there's an existing curb cut there, and they'll come straight down.
So that existing parking lot is actually on the parcel three, and it'll be removed with this, with the project.
Where will the entrance be?
They have a offer to purchase parcel two, which is next door to it. There is an easement, if you look to the west, for a road that comes from Lincoln all the way to Dixon, and they're going to get access for that road.
So I'm going to ask our attorney, I think we need to make the motion contingent that the access all gets approved before, does that make sense that we do that with the motion?
With the amendment motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I moved in my motion that the approval for case number P-12-Z-22 be approved contingent upon access being granted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Two seconds.
Second. I do want to point out that if I'm looking at this right, and I may not be, getting parcel two would not quite connect you to the easement. You'll have to get an easement off-site, right?
Right. Yes, yep. We are aware of that.
That's why we're kind of making it contingent because there's a couple of things that have to, moving parts that have to come together. So...
Yes, yep.
There's a road that comes in here off of Lincoln now, and this where it says easement. So they're going to come, this is Lad, so they'll come through here and attach onto that private ground. Once they get the permission, so it goes out to Dixon or Lincoln. That kind of loops around. I don't know what they call that, Lincoln Medical Complex that sits on the corner there?
I think you might be right.
Something like that.
And just so the board knows, the reason, correct me if I'm wrong, Tori, the reason they went this route is because if you look at the plat, there's a regulated drain that goes across the top of the property. And they were going, the county, they would have, it's a regulated ditch, isn't it? Sorry, it's a drainage ditch.
Right, it's over there.
The county was going to make them fill that in and then build over to get, and it was just way too cost prohibitive for them to do it that way. So that's why they decided to try to purchase lot two and come in the other direction. So...
How many units are you proposing for this?
I don't know the number of units yet because it's going to depend on how the site lays out. The owner told me the units will have garages on the bottom. He's not expecting more than four units per building. So it's going to come down to how it lays out with the ordinance requirements.
So these two-story, three-story units?
I would guess that they're three-story with, since the garage is on the bottom.
Any other questions from the board before we have staff report?
Can you tell us anymore about this townhomes, like any, the size of them or...
I don't know that that's been decided yet. I haven't seen anything from the architect at this point.
Any other questions from the board? We have the staff report, please. Director Shuline.
Yeah, staff report for case P-12-Z-22. Tori Trip of Trip Engineering Consulting on behalf of John Lad is requesting change in zone classification for the addresses listed above. This address parcel will be utilized as townhomes. According to the City of Kokomo zoning ordinance, M2 is compatible with the surrounding zoning districts, although R1 is not an appropriate adjacent district per the City of Kokomo zoning ordinance. There are parcels that surround the area that, pardon, there are parcels that surround the area to be rezoned that are zoned as R1. Majority property zonings are to the north institutional, to the south multifamily, and R1, very low density residential, and M1, low density multifamily residential. To the east, R1, low density residential, and to the west, OC, office commercial. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this area of Lincoln Road is located in an area proposed for low density residential. This is an area designated for single-family housing below a density of three units per acre. Typical low housing density, housing would be single-family detached homes. Under land use goals encouraged orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the city of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Relevant land use objectives are to ensure adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. Designate specific districts in the community to, that work for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and recreational uses. The goal of the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian networks. According to the transportation map, this area of West Lincoln Road is defined as a minor arterial. This is a street that collects and distributes traffic to and from collectors and primary arterial streets. The traffic count for this area of West Lincoln Road is 11,406 cars. This calculation is based on the nearest count at South Dixon Road. Requested zoning change is compatible to the surrounding base zonings. Therefore, the staff desires that the board forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council based on the information presented by the petition.
Any questions from the board now that we've had staff report? Any questions from the audience?
Hi, my name is Maureen Janneke. I'm a homeowner at 2201 Executive Drive. I am also the secretary of the Homeowners Association there. So I am representing the HOA members who will be affected by the rezoning of the Lad property located along the west side of Executive Place. With the exception of a few people, we are a community of people aged 65 and older and retired. We are concerned about the negative impact this rezoning may have. We understand the rezoning is for construction of townhouses. Because of the very small area to be used for this construction, we are concerned about the proximity of these buildings to our properties and how this will affect our property values. We're also concerned about increased traffic, possible crime, taxes, and other unknowns. We work diligently to keep our properties neat so the area has a positive street appeal. Having townhouses looming behind us will distract from that positive appeal. Therefore, we are requesting that the rezoning be denied. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Mark Brown, 2307 Executive Drive. I'm the, at the farthest west in the subdivision. And I just have a question. If this is passed as multifamily residences, are they allowed to build not only townhouses but apartment buildings? I mean, I see what she said there, and I don't oppose that, but it's not a very big piece of property. If they were to put, you know, seven, eight-story buildings in there, it'd be a real problem. So my concern is just, is this change of zoning, is it, it's a done deal if they get it, they can, if they're doing what's within the city, county regulations?
Well, number one, sir, after tonight, it has, if it's approved by this board, it has to be approved by city council as well. They have final approval on all rezonings. And then after that, if that's approved, there's a site plan process that they would have to go through. But their, my understanding is, everything that I've been told, their goal was to build townhomes. That's what they're, that's what they're wanting to build. And you're white, it's not, it's not the biggest lot in the world, so they will have to follow our zoning ordinance, and they'll have to make it fit within that zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience?
Name's Jim Reed, 2202 Executive Drive, Kokomo, 46902. I'm chairman of the Architectural and Landscape Committee for the Executive Place HOA. It appears to me this evening that there's a lot of unknowns about what the project's going to be. Yes, townhouses, but that could change. There's just a lot of details that concern me. Also, if it becomes apartments, say three-story apartments, that's completely, from an aesthetic standpoint, out of place with what's, the offices are single-story in front of it along Lincoln Road, the condos behind it, we're all single-story. And to put high-rise, two- or three-story buildings in there, I think, would be completely out of place from an aesthetic standpoint, and also would affect property values. We all have invested a lot of money in our condos and take pride in them. And... We all have invested a lot of money in our condos and take pride in them and are concerned about what property values would be affected by a project like this. Theoretically, they could be apartments. I've been in the rental business for 35 years. I know it's difficult to control tenants once they move in. They don't respect noise levels, they don't respect coming and going, don't respect their neighbors and it could create a difficult situation for, as Mark Brown indicated, we're all retired people, like it quiet. Thank you very much.
Just so, again, just so everyone understands, you know, the reason we don't have a lot of details is because this is just for the rezoning part of it. If this gets passed, then they will have to come back with a site plan approval, which will be another public hearing just like this one. You'll get the same letters, the adjoining property owners will get the same letters that you received tonight. So when you come back tonight, all these details will be laid out exactly what it's going to, what the project's going to look like. But I can tell you, every conversation I've had, there's never been one discussion about apartments. It's always been about townhomes and I think Ms. Tripp can verify that as well.
I appreciate that, but things could change, economics could change.
But that's why we have a site plan approval as well, so.
What would be the next step?
They can't build it until they come through the next step.
Correct.
And at that point, they have to pretty much pigeonhole what they're proposing and that's what we approve. After that, there would be no change.
Okay. Is the next step to go to the city council for approval?
Next, if this board passes this tonight, the next step is city council. Correct. And Councilman Grekewell will handle that case to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the audience?
Hi, I'm Debbie Denny, 2704 Executive Court, and I know you don't have answers to these questions, but I'm going to ask them anyway. The cost of the units, do you have a clue on what those are going to be so we would know if that would affect our value of our homes?
No.
Are they going to be a purchased townhome or are they going to be rentals or?
I was told today that he wants to sell them individually.
So they would be purchased. And I know you mentioned something, Greg, about the ditch and it would be cost prohibitive to fill that. I've fought since we've lived there almost nine years to get that stretch of that ditch mowed and finally found out that Kokomo High School owns that property, that ditch, which a lot of people don't know. So I don't know if you drive by there very often, but it looks hideous. And I know that's probably a topic for another meeting, but it would be helpful if somebody would go in and fill that ditch in and make it level so that it could be mowed because it's very unattractive and it, you know, it affects the, you know, the beauty of the city, so those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?
My name's Russell Dance, 2300 Executive Drive, Kokomo 46902. Okay, I just have a question for the young lady here. What exactly is a home, a townhome in respect to anything else? What kind of a building are we looking at?
What he is proposing is there be four townhomes per building, so there will be one building.
There'll be two buildings?
I don't know how many buildings.
Okay, but each one will have four townhomes then, so in other words, there'll be like two-bedroom, two-bath?
Most likely. I mean, it could be three-bedroom, I don't know.
And they will be three stories with the top story being a garage?
The bottom, the bottom will be garages and the townhome will be above that. So right now, we're just guessing because I haven't seen anything from the architect.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Any questions from the board? Every now and then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case P-12-Z-22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Parker?
Nay.
Ms. Durham is not here, correct? Ms. Dover?
Nay.
Mr. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Jefferson?
Aye.
Ms. Rule?
Aye.
Mr. Grekewell?
Aye.
Mr. Pike?
Aye.
Passes five to two.
The motion now carries. It will go to the common council and it will be presented there by Councilman Greg Grekewell. Matt Grekewell, excuse me, Greg. Make fun of my shirt, I'll call your own first.
Thanks, Tom.
That's all right, joke. Sorry about that.
All right, next case tonight, Mr. President, Charlie. This case P-14-Z-22. I'm going to refer to our attorney because I really don't want to read all of this because if I do, number one, it's going to confuse everybody in the room as well as myself probably. So there are nine properties, if I remember correctly, that are being included in this rezoning. So how can we do this legally without me having to read all this?
No pressure.
I think we could refer to the parcels, what they're zoned, what they're going to be rezoned as, and if anybody wants the more specific detail.
And we do, and we do have agendas on the back table that have all the parcels listed. And all the parcels will be rezoned to HI, high intensity industrial, so.
What exactly does that occur?
What's that mean when you say that?
Pardon me?
What's that mean when you say?
Sir, if you have a question, you have to come to, let us, yeah, let us do our little section here that you're familiar with, that won't talk.
Just as an abundance of caution, I guess I'll read through this, is that fair enough?
Okay.
So case P-14-Z-22, petition with the Greater Economic Development Alliance v. Charlie Sparks requesting the Kokomo City Plan Commission petition recommend to the Kokomo Common Council change of zoning classification for parcel one from R1 to HI, parcel three from R1 to HI, parcel four from R1, very low density residential within a freeway corridor overlay and office industrial agricultural overlay to HI within the freeway corridor overlay.
Yes.
Can't hear you, he talked up, we can't hear you. He talked up, we can't hear you, they can't hear you. You can scoot to the front, that might help. Well, okay, scoot to the front, then he said. Is that all right? Yeah, yeah, can't talk up, I guess I'll scoot to the front. Parcel six, seven and eight would be rezoned from agricultural AG within a freeway corridor overlay and office industrial agricultural overlay to HI, high intensity industrial manufacturing within the freeway corridor overlay. And parcel nine would be rezoned from LI, low intensity industrial business park to HI, high intensity industrial heavy manufacturing. Parcel 10B would be rezoned from AG agricultural within the freeway corridor overlay and office industrial agricultural overlay to high intensity industrial.
Yes, I understand that, sir.
All right. And these areas are generally bound by 50 East, 300 North and US 31. There's a list of the parcel numbers in the back on the agenda and so each of those property numbers are public record available for review.
Here's one.
Second.
Back table, that's your.
Oh, the back table?
They're gone, Greg. Here, here, here.
Well, there were, you just got to, everybody calm down for a second.
Yeah, I got one right here.
We have a motion and I have a second. Is there someone here to represent this case, please step forward. Thank you.
I'm still Charlie Sparks and I'm with the Greater Kokomo Economic Development Alliance, 700 East Furman. We were before this body earlier this year requesting a rezoning of 142 acres. We are in a position tonight where we actually need additional acreage to be rezoned to accommodate a really significant new opportunity for new investment, new jobs for the community. This area has been selected for economic development because it's already industrial in character. We have adjacent to the site about a million and a half square feet of productive capacity for manufacturing. We have thousands of employees showing up for work every day for industrial occupations. This area has excellent access to US 31 and it's also in really good shape with utility infrastructure. So that's why this area was selected by us early on for potential, but even more importantly than what we think is, we have an industry, a joint venture project with two significant employers, Atlantis and Samsung, that have decided this is the right spot to invest two and a half billion dollars and create over 1,400 new jobs. So we'd appreciate your support.
Any questions from the board before we have staff report? Director Shealan.
Staff report for case P-14-Z-22, Greater Kokomo Economic Development Alliance has requested change in zone classification for parcels listed according to the City of Kokomo zoning ordinance. HI is a compatible with the following zoning districts, PR Park and Recreation, Agricultural, IS Institutional, C2 Large-Scale General Commercial, M1 Medium Intensity Industrial Light Manufacturing and LI Low Intensity Industrial Business Park. Parcel numbers five through eight along with parcel 10B are all located within the FCOL, which is the freeway corridor overlay. Parcel numbers five through eight along with parcel 10B are also located in what is now the US 31 OIA slash OL Office Industrial Agricultural Overlay. Majority property zonings are as follows, to the north agricultural and HI High Intensity Industrial Heavy Manufacturing, to the south LI Low Intensity Industrial Business Park and agricultural, I'm sorry, agricultural or residential and agricultural. To the east agricultural and to the west High Intensity Industrial Heavy Manufacturing, C2 Medium to Large-Scale General Commercial and R3 Medium Density Residential and R4 Urban Residential. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, this area 50 East is located in an area proposed for office high-tech light industrial. This is an area designated for employment centers that utilize medium to large-scale buildings with medium to large-scale parking lots. Also, these facilities have low traffic, environmental or aesthetic impact on the surrounding areas. Under land use goals to encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety and quality of life for residents in the city of Kokomo while maintaining Kokomo as a leading community for affordable housing. Relevant land use objectives are to encourage adequate land for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional and recreational uses. Designate specific districts in the community suitable for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional and recreational uses. The goal of the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map is to enhance connections throughout the city for improved safety function and efficiency for all modes of transportation, including vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian networks. According to the transportation map, this area 50 East is defined as a local street. This is a street designed primarily to provide access to abiding properties and discourage free traffic. The traffic count for the area 50 East is 10,944. This calculation is based on the nearest count. This is the north County Road 50 East. The staff desires that the board forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board now that we've had staff report?
Hello, Spence.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Hang on, we're almost there.
Almost there.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience?
Okay.
I apologize. Spence, 2720 North Delphus. So basically, since you diverted, made 931 and US 31 is going to be more occupied, you're going to have more traffic, is that what you're saying? Because I've had this house on the road for a while and you diverted it and now we're going to have more doing commercial projects. So that's what you're saying?
Where her house is on 31, the back.
Sir, I need your name and address. My name is Dallas Roberts. 1324 South Wald.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Please continue. The main thing is we was worried about with the construction and everything, we was just worried about if that was going to intrude onto her property, if anything there was going to be done on the backside of 31. We would, she got this letter, so she was more or less worried that there's some trees and stuff back there that she don't want tore down and she doesn't, she's not sure how far back her property line goes to 31. So we was just making sure that nothing was going to be pushed onto her property or anything's going to be tore up behind her property off of 31.
Well, nothing can go onto her property without her approval.
Well, I understand, but I was just saying, right, that's why we was making sure that nothing was coming through there, there wasn't going to be tearing down any, you know, anything like that.
As far as tearing down trees, that I can't answer yet because, again, this is just for the rezoning part of it.
Right.
Just like the previous case, there'll be, there'll be a development plan approval will have to be done once all this is taken care of.
Now, how far south is that going from the?
Can you give us her address again?
From, pardon me? Hers, hers is 2720 North Delphus, but the backside of her house is right on 31.
Go ahead, sorry, I tried to look at the.
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, and that's what we was wondering about, you know, and I understand, you know, you'd have to have her permission if she's going to put anything on her property, but I understand there is sometimes a easement where it's kind of like anybody's property from the highway so far back and I just wanted to make sure nothing was going to be brought onto her property behind the fence.
It looks like you have 931 in between this property and the properties being rezoned.
Pardon me?
There's, 931 is in between the two properties, so you're going to have quite a buffer between.
Okay, so it's on the other side of the 931. Thank you. I was just wondering.
You're fine. You're fine.
You're very welcome. Any other questions from the audience?
My name's Jack Gallagher, address is 1080 East, 200 North, and that's actually Morgan Street. My biggest concern about this is environmental concerns plus property values. Environmental concerns, I don't know whether this has been considered or not, but are we going to wind up with like a steel mill problem again? Are we going to wind up with our wells ruined? Are we going to wind up with, you know, environmental problems? Because I know that in, sometimes in industrial, and I've worked in industrial, that, you know, waste and things like this can be pretty harsh on environmental, plus the fact that we've got farmlands there and right now farmlands are pretty important. And I, you know, like I say, I have some environmental concerns about, about this project.
Well, I think, I think our technology is a whole lot better now than it was back when the steel mill was put in and all that happened. So I know that, you know, it's just like Atlantis, they have to follow all environmental standards or they get, they get fined if they don't.
Right.
I'm sure this will be no different than what's happening now.
Probably a half a dozen regulatory agencies that are going to oversee this and approve this.
But what I'm saying is, a fine doesn't help my property if they run my well. You know, you can fine the people to death, but that's not going to take care of my problem. You know, their fines are not going to be paying to have my wells fixed or my safety systems fixed or, you know, whatever, the paint eating off the house, but, and also the property value.
Well, it's a $2.5 billion investment, sir, so I don't think that's going to affect your property values in a negative way.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking, that's why I'm saying, has any of this been considered? Consider, and plus, I'm not the only property owner in this general area. There's several others that, one fellow is going to be immediately, his property is borderline some of this. So I know that he has some concerns, although he's in health, hasn't been in good health. So, but this is some of the questions that I propose to you and to look at and to think about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, I'm Abby Underwood and I live at 1398 East 300 North. It's right across the street from where this whole thing is coming, so there's a lot of excitement with some of it and also some concerns, just obviously having that right across the street with a baby and a dog and chickens and things. And so my concern is where the access to the plant will be. I, I know that there's obviously going to be places where people are going to be pulling with lots of equipment and people, cars coming in. I understand they're coming up and down the road, but it's another thing to have everybody coming out right in front of your house. I wasn't sure if there was any information about. I wasn't sure if there was any information about the access, or where the entrances would be for the plant, because there's obviously like Toby Pike is there, and then 300, and then Busby, and I wasn't sure kind of where they're planning on coming out. Does anybody have any information about that?
At this point, we, we don't have any information on that for this particular hearing.
Okay.
Like Greg has said multiple times, this is just to rezone the property.
Okay.
Once Stellantis and Samsung come with their total plan, then that'll come back to the board, and we'll go through this process again.
Okay.
So I don't think none of that's been done yet, but when it does, it'll come back before this board yet again.
Okay.
We'll get another letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Any questions from the board? I call for a vote, all in favor of case P 14 Z 22. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, it now goes to the common council, presented there by the Honorable Councilman Matt Reek. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Okay, next case tonight, Mr. President, is case P 15 dash V dash 22. Petition to Kokomo City Plan Commission requesting the Kokomo Plan Commission forward petition or recommend to Kokomo Common Council to amend the Kokomo zoning ordinance. I know, that's a mouthful. I do, I do want to apologize before we get a motion on this. I just found out today that I had neglected to send these out ahead of time, so, you know, I'm going to go through these one at a time. These are changes that, up until, for about a year and a half, we've been working on changing our zoning ordinance and the way that we can do it. Beforehand, we had to pay someone else to change our own zoning ordinance. Now we can do it on our own. We went through the process, we hired an outside attorney, we went through the process, we've got it all worked out where we can approve, we can add our own zoning amendments, they all have to be approved by this board, and they all have to be approved by the city council. So nothing's changed in that regards, it's just that we can do it on our own, and we don't have to waste, I hate to say this, but waste a lot of outside time and money doing things that we can now do in-house, which would be a lot easier for us. And these are changes that we have come across. I've got notes from five years ago that, that are now in this package tonight, so I know we still need to get a motion to.
I've got a motion, I need a second.
Okay.
Second.
Now we can go.
So if you look, if you look at your packet, some of these are very simple, and some, some aren't. I'm going to let, I'm going to let TJ explain one of them. The first one we have is, if you look at the existing standards, if you remember back when we rezoned, we rezoned, when we annexed a lot of properties several years ago, we had certain zonings out in the county, and certain zonings in the city. And out in the county, in rural residential, you could have a fairly large pole building or garage or whatever. Now, but it's in the city, you're only allowed 1,000 square feet, which, which is, can be fairly small. So we, we decided to up that for, to 1,500 square feet. And, and one of the reasons that we changed some of this is, when you're, when the Board of Zoning Appeals, which Mr. Besser is, is on, and, and Ms. Durham is on, when you're on that board and you see a lot of the same cases all the time, that means your zoning ordinance isn't working, basically. So we, we, we need to try, you can't, you can't fix everything, but when we can fix it, we want to try to fix it, so we're not overloading the, the Board of Zoning Appeals for cases that really don't need to be heard. So the first one, we're, we're simply adding 500 square foot to the size of a accessory structure to be allowed in certain zonings. Okay? Anybody have any questions on that one? I think that one's pretty, pretty straightforward. If you, if you, if you have a zoning book in, in section 3.17, under permitted uses, it says multifamily 2 to 4 units. And then when you look at the special exception, it says drawing multifamily 4 units or less, which is basically saying the same thing. Under permitted uses, it's saying 2 to 4 units, and the special exception says 4 units or less, which is still the same thing. So we're going to remove the 2 to 4 units from the permitted use and leave it as a special exception for 4 units or less. Does that make sense to everybody? If it doesn't, please shout out, and I'll do my best to explain it better. The next one is, as we had one case tonight, for some reason in our zoning ordinance, and I, I firmly believe it was a mistake way back when, when the zoning ordinance was put into place, we have all these appropriate zoning districts. We have R2, R3, R4, and R5. But for some reason, a lot of them, R1 is not an appropriate zoning district, which makes absolutely zero sense. There's no reason for R5 to be appropriate and R1 not to be appropriate. So it just, I, I think it's a mistake, so what we're doing here, we're simply adding R1 to the appropriate adjacent districts for all, for all zones. Okay? That make sense as well? Okay.
What's the prime, I'm just going to ask a question. What's the primary difference between R1 and R2? Density?
Density, size of the lot, yes, yes, exactly. Yep.
Exactly right.
Okay. Let me get my brain around this one here, hang on a second. Oh, yeah, we're, we're starting to get, we, we're getting a lot of calls for wedding venues. And for a while, about 99.9% of them were out in the county. Now they're coming into the city limits, and so we really didn't have anything in our ordinance to regulate that at all, so we're, so we're wanting to add a wedding event venue as a special exception. So it, it would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, but it, it, it gives us a little bit of, gives us a little bit of regulation on, on these wedding events, because obviously we don't want them everywhere or anywhere, so that's why we decided to put that in the special exception use. Next one is, we, we decided to create a new zone. If you, you know, we have M1 and M2, all multifamily. We've decided to create a M3 zone, which is, because we're getting a lot of, obviously, we're getting more increases for large multifamily developments. So we're, we're, we're wanting to add this new zone where if the, because if you remember correctly, I think, I think the number is 16 or 17, if you look at your zoning ordinance, anything over 16 or 17 units has to have a special exception. So we, we did this R3, M3 zone, which is a larger multifamily zone to allow those bigger developments to fall into, so we don't have to have special exceptions for all those. They still have to follow the zoning, they still have to follow setbacks, and we, and we actually have the standards for those as well, for M3 zone, so, okay?
You said you have already developed the standards and the, and the quantity that's going to fall under the M3s.
I'm sorry?
You, you have, you have defined the quantity that's going to-
Yes, yes, yes.
Which is, do you know off the top of your head?
What the?
This size that's going to be, fall under M3, multifamily units?
Uh...
Did you just say 17 buildings? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think it's, I think, right now, if you, I can look it up real quick, I think it's over, it's either 16 or 17. Okay, someone find M2, I'm going to find it in two for some reason. Mike, you got it in here? I think I do it. Maybe it's on my desk.
Find this on my own before you find it. I'm alive.
I got it in one.
Here we go, what do you want now?
On M2.
Now you need to update it.
On the zoning district?
Yeah.
On the number of units?
17 units or more.
17 or 1.
So 17. I knew it was either 16 or 17, I couldn't remember. So now anything over 17 units will fall into this M3.
But no, no cap, we're not setting a cap on units then, 17 units or more, but not seven, not maximum of 20?
No, no, no. Well, the, the zoning ordinance basically sets the cap on it, because you can only have so many per density.
Per density, yeah.
Yeah, correct. So, so that basically takes care of that question, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense to everybody? Then, under section 3.31, we wanted to add a commercial boarding facility as a special exception, because we're starting to get calls about commercial boarding facilities for animals, which makes sense. We don't have a lot of regulations on those, so we wanted to add that to the zoning ordinance and put that in as a special exception for the BZA as well, to regulate that.
Along with the definition.
Along with the definition, yep. If you look at the next, if you look at the next, the definition, we actually, we're adding a definition for commercial boarding facility. And the, the reason the definitions are so important, and, and our job with, with Jess and I and the staff, and we look at certain things, you know, you can't sit behind a desk and you can't, you can't figure out everything. So sometimes we have to make a call, and somebody comes in and says, can I do this in this zoning district? Well, we may look through a whole zoning book, and there's nothing in the zoning book about it. So sometimes we just have to make a administrative call about where that's going to fit best. And the definition definitely helps when, when we have to look at that. If we don't have the definition, sometimes it gets pretty tricky. So the definition seems like a small thing, but it does, it does help us quite a bit when we're looking at, at those types of zones. Okay, so, next page. We're getting a lot of calls about Airbnbs in our community, so we decided to add vacation rental home to the special exception use. So that can be, we, even though, even though we're okay with them being in our community, this regulates how many, where we're going to put them, so there's some regulations that, that the BZA could put on those, so. And then the next one is the, the definition for vacation rental home. So again, the, the definition does help us. The next one is, oh, this is, this is for downtown, for downtown commercial. As you know, we, we have, we have housing in downtown commercial, but right now it's all, can only be on the upper floors. And we're getting more and more calls about people wanting to live in the downtown area. So what we're asking now is to allow for, for bottom floor residential in the downtown commercial zone, again, with a special exception through the Board of Zoning Appeals, so we can, we can again regulate that to some degree, okay? Then a couple of, we have, we have nothing, we've been working on signs for several years in our office, and making a lot of headway, but we really don't, don't have much in our zoning ordinance about sign maintenance. And sign maintenance can get to be a problem, because it makes the property look bad. You could have a great looking property, if your sign looks nasty, the rest of the property looks nasty. So basically, we're just, we're, we're adding, we're adding this definition for sign maintenance, which says refers to any maintenance tasks is done on a planned and ongoing basis to identify and prevent problems before they result in equipment failure. Some common routine maintenance includes regular inspections, service works such as changing light bulbs, cleaning, or replacing broken elements. Very simple. And then the next section is under 6.34, it's in conjunction with this definition, says all signs are required to undergo regular sign maintenance in order to remain, to remain in good repair. So this gives us a little bit of authority to contact the business owner and say, hey, you really need to do some sign maintenance here to make your-
How are you determining or defining regular maintenance? Annually, quarterly, monthly, or is that something to be set up by a property owner?
That's something we would probably just set up on a case-by-case basis, if we had those issues. You agree, TJ?
Yeah.
Usually when I call, I say Greg or the son of a gun here looks terrible.
Okay, let's see here, where are we at? Okay, oh, the big one, the big one. Well, not the big one, but it is kind of the big one. Storage buildings. We've had a lot of, we've had, we've had a lot of interest in storage buildings, and we've had a lot of discussion about parking, because the way our ordinance is written, if someone puts a storage building in, they have to get a special, they have to get a variance, even though they really don't need any parking, because when you go to a storage unit, you're going to park in front of your storage unit, and that's the only place you're going to park. So, so here's what we added to stealth storage, warehouse, or similar facilities. Storage buildings without a main office, so, and there's a lot of, now we're just doing key cards, there's no, there's no office. Storage buildings without a main office are not required to have any additional parking. Storage buildings with the main office should have at least parking spaces. And if you remember correctly, on, on a couple of our site plans, we've, we've approved some indoor storage facilities as well, the old Marsh and the old Kmart. So we, we did decide that since we're having some indoor, you might have more than one person coming to the indoor storage at the same time, so we kind of came up with the number that they would have to have 10 spaces for any indoor storage facilities, so.
You're completely removing the square footage part.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so I'm going to turn the last one over to TJ. This is more his, his than it is mine. I'll let him explain it. He can do a lot better job of it than I can.
On the, the current zoning ordinance, if we are annexing a property into the city, then it is required to go through the rezoning process as well. And so a lot, to simplify that process on the annexation, that it either, we're modifying it so that it either be placed to the most similar zoning district that it was in the county at that time, or a zoning district deemed appropriate by the Plan Commission and Common Council, following the factors that we follow every day when we rezone properties. So in other words, we can avoid some of those petitions that we get more and more annexations. They're already zoned residential, then we'll be able to go through that process, or as an alternative, they can go through the Plan Commission, then to city council to, for approval on that rezoning, as it's annexed, which is going to save some time and some efforts.
Because now we have to do it all separately.
Correct.
Annexed and re, so now we can do it at the same time, as TJ said, kind of save our office time and also the petitioners, so.
That makes sense.
I know that's kind of quick, does anybody have any huge concerns, any issues? So if not, I'm going to take this to the council. So if anyone has any huge issues, that's my goal, is to get it on the agenda for the next city council, if we can, if not, we can do the next one.
Is there going to be a rebrand of the, or are you just going to add it to what's there?
There's a, there's a separate ordinance that's been repaired, that shows straight through and the definition tied in.
So we could, we could get everybody copies of that, and you could add it to your-
Yeah, yeah. Because yeah, you go through, you get, this is no longer here.
Yep, yep.
Where did it go?
Oh, you're talking about, you want a, a leaflet to stick into your current zoning ordinance.
I want you to update once online, if you really want to.
I want you to update, that's what I use 99% of the time.
Well, yeah.
I can bring this up here and that up there.
Yeah, the ordinance will be, it's cut and paste, so we can stick it into the current. You may have to contact our outside providers to have them stick those in there.
Okay. And, and, yes, we can, we'll, we'll definitely get these, once, once this gets passed by city council, we'll definitely get these to IT and get, get everything.
I'll be attached.
Absolutely.
You can go anywhere you want now, right?
Okay, anybody have any questions on, anything on, on the zoning amendments? Okay, anybody have any questions on, anything on, on the zoning amendments?
Okay. We have a motion to second for approval of claims. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll go to the city council and presented there by Councilman Matt Gruke.
Thank you all.
Other business.
I have my own other business, but Mr. President.
Next thing on the agenda is approval of claims.
I move to approve the claims dated July twelfth for the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second. We have a motion to second for approval of claims. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims are approved.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Good adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.